I'd like to call the City Council meeting of March 10th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
I'm here.
Please stand for the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and equal rights and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the February 24th?
Subm. Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, presentation. The fiscal year '25, '26, City Council, I mean, City of Prosperity's budget presentation of the general fund revenues, general fund departmental expenditures of the police, community development, public works, finance and administration, and the five-year capital improvement plan. So I will turn that over to Sheri.
I just wanted to correct you to get description of the capital plan effective plan through the next meeting. So today's budget is general fund, our other new budget. And then our second budget is the capital improvement plan and all the other things. So our budget for today is the name of the presentations from all of our departments and some, as you can see, we have some financial considerations. We'll look at the fund balance and our projected revenue expense results for fiscal '25. And then we'll roll into future, we do the department's presentation of more details. Okay, we have a few considerations that I wanted to point out for this coming year, fiscal '26. Contribution to the city's police pension fund has always been a big number for us. This year, our contribution is going to be 1.58 million versus last year, 1.63. This represents 2.5% decrease of about 40,000, and that was calculated by the actuaries. So that's, that's a good number. If you recall, our contribution in '24, the additional $2 million that we passed over from the general fund into the police pension, over and above what we budgeted, is probably the most significant reason why this, the numbers now have decreased just a bit. And of course, the market helped during the last conference. Our proposal this year is 100% of the recommended contribution by the actuaries. It consists of 496 in our tax levy that we passed last November, and our portion is 1,088 for the cover of 1.5. The last three years, I'm happy to say, we have met, and in '24, we exceeded the recommended contribution, so we are on a good trend, trend line for going forward. Our, our projected funding level for the police pension plan at the end of '25 is at 71.04%, which is up from 65% last year. Also reflective of our additional contribution and the strong market that we had. We're hopefully continuing that trend to go forward. That's our, our plan. And so right now, we appear to run some good for you. I want to speak a little bit about the debt service today. Of course, both the debt service funds is in for next meeting, but currently, we have the 2013 and the 2020 bonds that are scheduled to pay off in December '26, which will be fiscal year '27, and that would be within our next budget. To provide for the road program and keep our rate consistent, we're recommending that we consider a bond referendum, which would be validated in March '26 or November '26. So that is something we want to consider. The last road bond referendum was in 2011, and at that time, it was a total of 15 million, 5 million each, that was drawn over three years, 2011, 2012, and 2015. So we are in the final year of paying off debt road program, which is why we're planning on for fiscal '27. Capital Improvement Plan is going to be updated and presented at the next meeting. Total project costs for the five-year period are 42 million. Our funding sources are consisting of 20 million approximately. This is just an estimate at this point for the road program. 10 million we have, are looking at grant awards, if the general fund will continue to contribute 5 million a year, and any other grants that come up between now and then. We'll go into the detailed projects and the status of projects at the next meeting specifically, so then we'll jump into the demo with more detail. Any questions on that so far? Here we have our fund balance projections, the problem being the beginning fund balance, that is of April 30th of '24. Those are per our audit report, the grant that we currently have, and get, get for those numbers that are starting point. We have projected results for fiscal '25, and we have projected fund balance for the beginning of this budget year '26. For the remaining column, there are budgeted numbers proposed for '26, and then the projected and fund balance is the latter column. I just want to speak a little bit about the general fund. If you'll notice, our '25 results net revenue column shows 500, who this is on? 583,847, which is a good year. And our net revenues budgeted in this budget '26 that we're proposing will only have a break even, or be at about 60,000 plus. The numbers on, the letters on the side are described on the following slide, and we explain what those are. I highlighted the fund balances that have a negative number, and the explanation is in those letter items. Also up there, you'll see on the top right is the general fund balance projection broken down by categories of fund balance. So we still have our non-spendables. Those are like the prepaid and anything inter-fund receivable and payable. Restricted to public safety comes, I'm sorry, narcotics, CDs, assets, and UI combined. Those are restricted monies to use for just those purposes. We have our emergency reserve committed. It's 30% of our fund balance, so that's still in there. And then we have the $5 million capital maintenance also in our fund balance, which leaves the unassigned fund balance at the end of this budget cycle fiscal '26 to be 4.5 million. If you look at the explanation under K, over there on the left, it's 34% of our next power and door expenses. So that's pretty, pretty strong number. In total, our revenues are projected for 11.5 million, where we budgeted 11.0. We're at 102% of budget on revenue side for fiscal '24. Significant numbers in that that make that up came from our investments. Our investment income was 120 higher than budget. And then our payment for the IBA that we have for Milwaukee Sanders quarter, Sanders Road quarter, we got 250,000 that was not budgeted. So those are the main items that draw us in to 102% of the budget for fiscal '25. Expenditures, we budgeted 11 million, and we came in at 10.49. Again, very close. 97% of the budget savings were due to the deferrals on funding projects that we pushed into the next year. The next slide, this is a visual of the major writing items from the year '23 to '26. It looks pretty consistent across the board. Not too, not too much significant on this one, it's going to get worse. So those are steady, trending up slightly higher on, on most of them, and again, those are just major revenue. The next slide shows us what percentage of our total revenue is each one of these major categories, along with the total in the budget. If you'll notice, 30% of the city's revenue is in our governmental, which includes income tax, PPRT, and sales tax. Our biggest portion is that in the governmental revenue. Second to that is 27% comes from local taxes, property, non-home rule, used utilities, rental cars, the sub living, the tax, and the student loan. The thing that ties all these revenues together is that they're not in our control. They are fixed pretty much by, you know, the state or the local spending. So that gives us 64% of the city's revenue that is out of our control. So we need to react to that, we need to respond to it, and so that's why it's important on the budgeting side that we stay conservative and respond to what we can. And now we'll go to the expenditures of our last review.
Okay, for the expenditure overview, we're looking at a proposed budget for FY '25, '26 of 11,264. If you look at it, here's a kind of a historical look back from '23 on of the expenditures that we had. And if you look at '23, '24, we notice there's 17 million of expenditures. Part of that expenditures is because of the 5, 5.5 million transferred to the capital fund for future cap, capital improvements. And the other part is the 2 million that we, additional pension contribution. That's why, and you see the 17 million there, about 10, 2, pretty consistent over the years on the expenditure side. The next slide here shows kind of like the revenue side, a breakdown by percentage of where the most expenditures are being spent in percentage-wise. And you see it's the public safety side. They also have the most employees on this side. And that 6 million number there, 3.9 of it is salaries and benefits. And the other part of it, 1.5 million is the city's portion of the contribution to the pension fund. The other 2.9 million is part of state mandates that, for initiatives that the state is mandating the police department have to follow based on train, some training, body worn cameras, things like that. Chief Durman will, in the, in future presentation here, will explain in more detail regarding the state mandates that we have to budget reform the expense side. The next slide here is, is the general fund expenditures by department. This table shows an historical analysis of expenditures of actual being spent from '23 through this year projected, '25. And it also shows the proposed expenditures for the budget for '26. And on the side, shows the percentage of increase from projected '25 to '26 proposed. If you notice, on the city council side, we have a, a nice number there, minus 14%. Part of that is because, part of the city events are now going to be expensed on the tourism side, and Peter will get into a little more detail regarding that. Based on the other percentages there, the department heads will be able to give you more detail on why, on the percentage increase and the things that they're proposing in this budget that cause those percentages there. The next slide is our debt service that Sheri talked about at the beginning, or our payments that we have to make for FY '26. On the road construction debt side, we have a little over 1.1 million in principal with about, close to $100,000 in interest that need to be paid this year on the, for FY '26. And then in the special service area, we have 190,000 with 27,000 of interest need to be paid, for a total of 1.5 million for FY '26 on the debt service side payment. Any questions before we go on? So now we're going to get into each of the departments to discuss in detail about the revenue and the expense side of their department. We'll start with administration, finance, and legal. Peter.
Thank you, Bob. I'll also just briefly go over the city council and commissions. As we can see, that should be up there first. Thank you very much. Council and commissions, as, as Bob mentioned, actually was a 14 point, 14% reduction at the proposed budget, year from year. We have a 2.25% cost of living. These are just the highlights, what I'm going to highlight here. 2.25 cost of living for staff, that is the full-time digital communication technician. Same PCBA, same fire stipends. We do have two NRC interns, and as you know, one of those interns is paid for through the natural, is paid for by, I'm sorry, reimbursed by the Park District. So, and then the elected official salaries, which are, are the same as last year. The reduction really comes from, as Bob mentioned, the special events. We, we normally have been funding about $43,000 through city, through the city council for special events. That would fund 10 to 20, $25,000 approximately for Rock the Runway, and 10,000 for the Block Party, and then an additional 5,000 or that, just in case a special event need to happen or anything like that. We pulled 37,000 of that away. That's going to be absorbed by the Tourism District. Tourism District money can be spent for promotion of the city. And I would say the Rock the Runway and the Block Party are excellent examples of events that promote the city and how great we are and what we can offer our residents. So that's the reason why that has gone down. I did have, I did propose $5,000 in there because you never know. We are coming up on our anniversary next year. So our anniversary actually is January 31st, 2026. But we may be looking past May 1st if we want to do something. I don't, that's the council's decision. Nothing has been decided upon that. That's always something we can come back and look at, but these are, this is, this is just a proposed budget for right now. For Natural Resources Commission, they have a flat proposal request. As I mentioned, they do have two interns that is paid, one is paid for by the city and one is reimbursed through the Park District. Their request for 8, $8,200 is, is flat compared to what they requested last year. So there's no surprises there. And then for the Audio Visual Department, that's pretty stable with peg fees that come in, that fund capital and equipment for our AV department. That's, like I said, is level at 23,000. Are there any questions or concerns? Onto administration, finance, and legal. Pretty much status quo, but there is a bump approximately 6% in the proposed budget for administration. We are still at our full staffing of four full-time employees. Our budget did increase approximately 66,000. This is primarily due to the city's brand-new Agenda and Minutes platform. That's 91,000 annually. As you may remember, this platform, once it's up, up to speed, will actually have the capability of a fantastic search function for not only the employees, but when we do research, but also for our residents. It's a, a more efficient and effective way for our residents to get the information they need from our website, and especially for minutes and agendas. Wages are projected at 2.25%. As you see, professional services did increase approximately 25,000. That is a, a dollar amount that we put in as a proposal. We anticipate, as Sheri had mentioned, about a possible referendum for consulting fees. Again, we need to decide, and this will be discussed later, I believe Joe is going to talk about this, but that 25,000 was put in there for that specific purpose of, of a consultant fee. Postage unfortunately has gone through the roof. This one actually is a double-edged sword. It's actually not bad because, actually, this postage, postage I do believe is, has gone up because we're also going after the scoff laws for vehicle stickers. So it's costing us more in postage, but we're getting more on the back end with our vehicle stickers. So it's actually an investment in making more, in getting more revenue and getting actually people to comply with our code like we want them to do. And then health insurance, we had an 8% bump. Any questions or that on administration?
Just wanted to, just for the record, I wanted to correct you, for the new Agenda and Minute platform, you met 9,100, and you said 91,000.
I'm sorry, 9, it's, it's not 91,000. We got a deal on it. It was supposed to be, but Lloyd and I, we, we worked our magic. It's 9,100 annually. I do apologize about that, if I misspoke. For finance, pretty steady. It's a 7% increase, like everything else. Audit fees go up, actuaries, software costs for Casell. We did upgrade our financial software, so that comes into play there. And then legal, we did take a, a small decrease in legal, and that actually approximated 11,500. That is due to collective bargaining. Our police department is actually, both our, our sergeants and our patrol officers are getting ready to come to the table for collective bargaining. We anticipate that a majority of that bargaining is going to happen before May 1st, knock on wood. So this way, we reduced on the back end for next year, the amount of money that we budget for, for collective bargaining, because we assumed most of it's going to be taken care of this year. And, and that is actually it for myself. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you very much. This year, as we touched on earlier, has been a very good year for the building department. At the end of last year, we were looking at some uncertainty in the construction and remodeling revenue side of the equation. We also had had a major build-out the year before with a number of restaurants that had come in and rem, commercial remodeling. Happy to report that revenues this year are approximately $80,000 over budgeted last year, so we've, we're doing very well there. And our expenses this year are down approximately 32,000 below budgeted. I attribute that to, we had a great response for our RSVPs, or RFPs, for scanning services and record management system. And we did have some expenditures to Mure Park, but not as much as we had thought due to that holding. As we budget for next year, we will be looking to put some aside because we do, did learn recently that that project may be picking up some steam. So we'll have to put some money into our professional services budget to offset that. We've been experiencing a 6% increase in building permits issued last year and 22% increase near, over permits for the last six years. So that has been seen in a large number of the revenue that we've experienced. We also saw the fire restoration at 1201, 1213. North Elmhurst come into play, and those revenues has helped. We also saw a lot of, talked to a lot of people that the stabilization of construction materials and labor costs was a factor in a lot of projects moving forward this year. Again, we did have less expenses for professional services on some of the smaller projects. Overall, we're proposing a, a increase in budget this year. We're already informed that we've had, got a number of new single-family homes coming up after the 1st of May. We've also have received notice of some potential interior commercial space build-out, and this budget does not take into consideration any permits for Sky Harbor yet. The reason being is we did pick up the demolition and their scheduled calls for it. However, until we actually see with this one, because we don't know when 624, Runway 624 is going to be decommissioned, we don't know. A couple of the other avenues, so we did not have a good projection on what that project may be for permit revenue. So if I'm not going to just guess with magic ball on this one, I wanted to have a little more concrete. And if it does come in, that just means a bonus for us on the revenue side of the equation. Under the expenditures, I highlighted that we're coming in about approximately 5% less than fiscal '25. One of our big expenditures proposed for next fiscal year is the addition of a permanent part-time administrative assistant. We're losing our college intern, and also too, with the workload demand that has happened with the records management and the permits. Additionally, we are putting in, we've had a lot of requests to expedite some of our functions in terms of smaller permits. Rough permits, HVAC permits, some of the basic flat work stuff that has, now, they just are taking in the order they're received, just because of staffing and project management. If we can set up, and my admin clerk, she's been certified and can do some of that expedite, expediting work with myself and plan reviewer, and that would be an added service to the residents at a minimal cost. And would increase the customer satisfaction of permit issuance. We are also looking on the expenditure side, we've been noticed that we're going to be seeing a 4% increase from all our third-party vendors, plumbing inspectors, health inspectors, those other contracted services this year. We are going to be entering in year two of our records digitalization and records management. We have had initial contracts in phase one, is going well. Additionally, last year's code update, or zoning code update is in phase two, and the goal is to have that done this fiscal year, so that will not be a budget for fiscal '27. We are also starting the building code update this year. So we've got quite a few large initiative projects coming out of this project that will not be carryovers into the '26, '27. This last sheet here shows the permit activity since 2019 to 2024, and shows the growth that we've seen, both in number of permits, activity, inspections, and the EAV that we've added through those construction permits to the city's value. The 2019 anomaly of the construction, that was due to the fire at River Trails and the Connor commercials, so that was a one-off outlier. If you look at 2020 going forward, those are all showing systematic growth through our permitting and construction value. With that, I will answer any questions anybody may have.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Public Works Department, general fund for this year. Across the board, like our other departments, there's increases of IMR, health insurance, and all that, that add into our budget. We have a slight increase this year for, this will be the first fiscal year we have a full-time administrative assistant working, so that added a little bit to the budget this year. We are projected to come in about 100,000 below budget for this year, so we've had some projects and things that we pushed a little bit, so those have been rolled into the expense for next year, so that's why that shows there. Small increases, we kicked about 10,000 more towards building expenses this year, a little bit more towards our forestry work for during Parkway tree work. A little bit more towards our forestry work for during Parkway tree work. And I think our biggest thing on the general fund this year is the addition of our software management tool. It puts about another 28,000 onto this year's budget. And then after that, I believe it's about a $16,000 a year charge. So the implementation is a big hit for this one. There's notes on here about stuff that we're doing, training, workflow management and the asset management. If you could flip to the next slide there. Again, the workforce, myself, six full-time guys, the assistant administrator or the administrative assistant. And then we will be bringing in again two seasonal workers this summer to help us out. The big part of my budget presentation will be the next one. We're going to be talking about sewer, water, parking, SSA 8 levy 37, tourism capital fund. The general fund for Public Works is just the nuts and bolts to keep everything going. All the exciting stuff is to come. So kind of a short and sweet part of the presentation, but I, I do have a whole road show for the next time. So any questions on this general fund portion? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll start out briefly describing our staffing levels. We're slotted for one chief, one deputy chief, our director of police administration. This was a merged role between our record supervisor and our administrative assistant under Chief Caponegro. Patrol division consists of four patrol sergeants, four patrol corporals, eight patrol officers, one of them being the tourism district officers. We're allowed for four part-time patrol officer positions. Currently, we only have two. Investigations division consists of one detective sergeant, two detectives, one DEA task force officer who is assigned full-time to the drug enforcement administration. And then 2024, we saw the gang intelligence team come to life. It was the deputy chief Poufons idea to put together team of patrol officers and detectives to really combat the gang crime on the east side. And lastly, our records division and social services division. The records division consists of one record supervisor, who is the director of police administration, serving dual duties for the administration and records, two records clerks and six part-time desk officers that are mainly utilized for prisoner watch on the weekends and after hours, and our full-time social worker under the social services department. Organization chart briefly shows how everything is broken down as it starts at the chief of police. Deputy chief and Poufons have taken a bit of a different approach to where he's allowed to focus more on patrol and investigations while I manage support services and records on a daily basis to better utilize our time and, and give everybody the attention they deserve. Some accomplishments and achievements over the year. As you all know, we pride ourselves on community outreach and community involvement. We've had a lot of success over the last couple of years with the Rob Roy Coffee with the PHPD. Eastside Safety Meeting has been a work in the progress. We are going to try some new approaches this year to get more audience. They help us enhance partnerships with the community, strengthen community ties to reduce crime. We've updated our city surveillance system that was very old and outdated. The cameras were, anytime we had bad weather, they were not working. We installed seven Flock Condor cameras. They're full PTZ and zoom capabilities, which have assisted in several investigations. If you look at the map on the screen, those are the locations all on the east side, east of Public Works, where we have our license plate readers and surveillance cameras. Creation of the gang intelligence team, as I previously mentioned. It has prosecuted 13 gang members, seized, the team has seized six firearms and a number of illegal narcotics. To the right picture of me and Chief Caponegro from the staff in command, something that I strive to send every sergeant and possibly every corporal to once a year as, as the budget allows for. We've hired a good number of new employees. Full-time records clerk Bianca Lana, who's doing a great job. We've hired three part-time police officers. Two of them have transitioned into full-time roles. Officer Mulaney and Officer Hart, I'm sorry, three full-time police officers. Officer Coleman is currently in the academy right now. He's going to graduate in June and then go into the field training program. Our embedded social worker, Maldonado, has assisted many families and victims in need. Most cases where there is a victim in need of assistance, those cases are referred to the social services for help. She has created the Helping Hands Fund, which helps Prospect Heights families in need to offer Uber rides to the victim advocate center, offer a stay at the hotel. She was, that, that fund helped a lot of residents. If you recall, there was a, an accident at the Prospect in formerly the Sherwood Inn. 10, 15 families were displaced and the fund was able to secure housing at the Motel 6 for them. We've maintained 100% training compliance through I-Let's-Bee. This is what Assistant Finance Director Tannehill was, was referring to. The Safety Act has mandated the police officers in the state of Illinois stay current and compliant with many training mandates. And we've, we've successfully done that all while being unfunded by the state. And a lot of those, a lot of those training initiatives cost a lot of overtime money. And we have, we have really been successful in that by sending some of our officers to I-Let's-Bee and NEMER training to be certified instructors so that they can train our officers in-house. Body worn cameras, we've implemented and launched our body worn camera program. All of our officers are equipped with body worn cameras. That was something that we had to be compliant as of January 1st and we were compliant as of December of 2024. Department goals for 2025, '26. We are looking to upgrade our aging police fleet, replace and outfit four, four police vehicles. In addition to that, our police vehicle laptops are also old and are experiencing problems with GPS location and running Motorola softwares that are consistently requiring more and more to run them efficiently. Police department monument sign. We're looking to install an electronic PD monument sign with a message board in front of the PD to better display messages, initiatives and events that are going on at the PD or at the city. Officer wellness, we're looking to offer counseling sessions to all of our sworn members of the department with the First Responders Wellness Center, which is ran by a former Chicago police officer turned psychologist. And it's to offer officers a confidential, a one-on-one session at the police department while on duty to speak with a mental health professional and deal with the stresses of the job. Police services, we're looking to maintain current level of quality service, current staffing levels as many departments are experiencing challenges and that department maintain quality training offered to our sworn members via in-house training and, and outside of the PD training. Leadership development, I'm looking for corporals and sergeants to attend leadership and management style training. You will see our training budget has slightly been increased to accommodate a lot of these courses. And professionalism, maintaining, enforcing and embodying high levels of professionalism, of course, starting by, leading by example. 2024 by the numbers, as you can see, we've answered 12,598 calls for service last year and on an average breaks down to about 35 calls per day. Busiest day of the week was a Saturday. Busiest hour of the day was 11:00 AM. And our busiest day of the year was May 18th. In comparison, some of our neighboring agencies answer approximately 15,000 to 17,000 calls a year with double or quadruple the police force. 152 reported battery and domestic batteries, 65 criminal damages to properties and vehicles, 405 thefts, a large number of that was catalytic converters, 92 driving under the influence violations and 18 weapons offenses. Looking at some numbers, general fund. Revenue wise, in looking at where we are at currently, we're, we're expecting to, to see a slight increase of that, 9.9% to be exact. And then expenditures, 1.5% to be exact. And I'll, I'll break that down in the next couple of slides. In terms of revenue, traffic fines, court fines, the red speed, most of that is, is made up by Red Speed, our camera that's located at Palatine and Milwaukee Avenue. It's a red light camera. Anticipated higher revenue based on current proposed budget and where we currently are at with the 10, 10 months that we have. Ordinance and parking fines, officer issued local ordinance citations, liquor fines, code enforcement violations, anticipated to be a little bit higher based on where we're at right now. Police revenue, special details, home bar, papcor, bridge church, security and traffic, security and traffic details, these have become weekly details. This is where we have an agreement with private property establishments and they hire one or two police officers to provide security or traffic direction. And these have become, the ones that are mentioned on here have become weekly details once or twice a week. And so that line item is expected to be higher. Expenses, wages for the part-time sworn officers, we have cut this down a little bit. $20,000 to accommodate some of the necessary cuts. It has proven to be challenging to hire part-time officers. Very few officers, when they retire, want to go back into policing on a part-time scale. Professional services, slight increase there. That is for the addition of the First Responders Wellness Center, where I'm looking to offer officers with that one-on-one mental health screenings. Northwest Central Dispatch Systems, reduction in annual costs, bringing them down to, by 5,000 memberships. Addition of GEMS membership, GEMS is Joint Emergency, Joint Emergency Management Systems. It's ran through Northwest Central comprised of all the municipal agencies that the Northwest Central Dispatches for. I'll briefly talk about that and I'll go about it in detail as well. But they are, it's a coordinated effort of many agencies for emergency management situations that require managing that situation from start to finish. And GEMS offers that. We would be the last municipality from Northwest Central that is not, that has not joined just yet, something the city has discussed. And this would be citywide, not just police department. Training, slight increase there due to the leadership and management training courses for supervisors, corporal sergeants and officers in charge. Police small equipment, 14,500 decreased there because the PD Wi-Fi and PD firewall's expense was moved to the DEA account to alleviate some of the cuts. Training, this is, now we're going into the DEA Fund 16. This, this, this is the money that is, that is mostly, that is all given to the city by the DEA Drug Enforcement Administration due to the seizures that the task force officer who's on full-time with the DEA. Here I'm looking at, at a number of increases. Training, Safety Act mandated use of force training, rapid deployment in high-risk traffic stops. Every year we have to do one of these two, so they're, they're in an offset biannual cycle. But we have to, we have to train all 24 of our officers and it's an eight to 10-hour day per officer to get the credits needed to meet the Safety Act mandate. Equipment maintenance, a large increase here. I'm looking to put the Flock license plate reading cameras, the Flock Condor cameras, Axon body worn cameras and the Axon Taser 7s on their equipment maintenance under the DEA. And I'll go over that in detail in a couple of slides. Police small equipment, this is where I look to expense the police vehicle laptops and the cradles that support them and charge them, the squad cars, the police department Wi-Fi and firewall updates, which are very outdated and, and need to be replaced. And then lastly, the police equipment capital, I look to expense here, two new police vehicles and outfitting, and then the squad 605 replacement, which was lost in the fire back in December or January. Significant expenditure increases overall budget-wise. We're looking at $96,221 increase from fiscal year '24, '25 and largely made up with wages at 50,000 wages for wages, the first wages, that's for administrative wages. Second one is for sworn officers, our patrolmen and detectives at 39,000. And then memberships, 23,000, which is the GEMS Joint Emergency Management System. Alternative funding sources, this is where we rely heavily on grants and, and the DEA. We were lucky to secure a body worn camera grant through the Small Rural Tribal Micro Grant. I submitted the first year's cost of $28,000. So far, everything is looking good and we should be receiving those funds in the next month or so. Axon Taser, ILEUS grant, ILEUS offered Illinois law enforcement alarm systems, offered a grant for the purchase of new Tasers. The current Tasers that we have are discontinued and they're no longer in production, so we would receive no support from Axon and we had to switch to these new Tasers. We were granted this grant for $12,700, which will cover the first year's cost. I will be submitting second year reimbursements as well and hope to get them. I-Let's-Bee recruitment and retention grant. This was a new grant put on by the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board. And it was a recruitment and retention grant I put in for $670,000 to fund retention bonuses for our current employees. If we get it, it will be a nice incentive for officers and employees to stay with the police department. 20,000 for full-time employees, 10,000 for part-time employees with a commitment to remain with the department for 10 years. I'm still waiting a response from this. Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnerships. This is a grant we put in for every year where Bureau of Justice matches 50% the cost of bulletproof vests, which you know expire every five years and are no longer able to be kept in service. And then lastly, a grant that I just came up with recently, the State Police Revocation Enforcement, which if, if allow, if, if given, will allow me to purchase more surveillance cameras or possibly fund the current ones that we have. It's through the Illinois State Police and I've inquired about this with our grant writers, administrative consulting specialists. DEA Fund 16, we're relying heavily on, on the DEA funds to fund a lot of our expenditures. Revenue for the DEA fund is hard to forecast because it's all based on seizures. Depending on how much the DEA group that our task force officers are assigned to seizes, it's going to dictate what the percentage is for our, our city and our department. These funds can only be used to increase or supplement the resources of the receiving agency and they shall not be used to replace the appropriated resources of the department. Every year we run a tactical unit and gang suppression detail, May through September. And we also cover the DEA TFO's overtime compensation, which is reimbursed up to 19,500 by the DEA. Some, some other additional expenditures, Lauderback and Amen Services, the Children's Advocacy Center, this is where we send all of our victims of, of major crimes, particularly sex assault crimes, and, and they conduct very good victim sensitive interviews that, that we ourselves cannot conduct. The Safety Act mandated training, as I mentioned, rapid deployment, high-risk traffic stops. Those have to be in person to count for the use of force hours. Flock license plate reader and Condor cameras at 22,000, Axon body worn cameras and those, we cannot get away, that's a, that's a state mandate. Axon Taser 7s, we're looking at $5,700 after the first year annually. Training supplies to accommodate those rapid deployment, high-risk traffic stops because they do require simunition, police vehicle laptop and cradle upgrades, police department Wi-Fi and firewall updates and two new police vehicles and the squad 605 replacement. Some nice imagery, we are, the sign is at the top left of, of the page. That is the, that is the monument sign with the electronic message board that we're looking to install in front of the police department and get away from the vinyl signs on the green garden stakes. This year in October will be our 35th anniversary of the police department. And to commemorate that, we are doing anniversary badges and also challenge coins. Two pictures of, of the two squad cars from previous years that, that we have gotten. Lastly, some imagery from our award ceremony. And at the top, our latest hires over the last year and a half. That is all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number five, appointments, confirmations, proclamations, we have none. Item six, public comment on agenda matters. Clerk, do you have any?
No, thank you.
On to number seven, our consent agenda. We have two items. Item A, ordinance 02503, staff memo and ordinance approving of sale, donation and destruction of surplus property, which is a second reading. And then item B, which is resolution R2515, a staff memo. And then item B, which is Resolution R2515, a staff memo and resolution approving a supplemental local funding commitment for motor fuel tax, Rebuild Illinois funded Owen Flood Control Project in the amount of $27,296. Item A is a second reading. Unless anybody has any questions, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no old business tonight. Item nine, new business. First item, Resolution R2513, staff memo and resolution authorizing and awarding bid recommendation for the Owen Court Flood Control Project with Earthworks Land Improvement and Development Corp. For an estimated cost of $692,296 with a 10% contingency for unforeseen underground conditions that may arise during construction. We need a motion to approve.
So moved, Anderson.
Second, Cameron.
A motion and a second. Mark, Joe, anybody want to comment on this one?
Sure. This is a part of the Willow Road grade change project, flood control project, where we're going to raise Willow and Owen. At the time, we also polled homeowners along Hillcrest, they decided to not participate in that. So the two streets to raise the elevation to prevent the water from passing over the streets, that, with the improvement, will pass under the street. There's a couple parts to this. One is, as a requirement, prerequisite, we have to provide compensatory detention space. And that's, within the agreement, that's a responsibility of the City of Prospect Heights. That work is eligible for State of Illinois Rebuild Illinois funding. However, this work has to be done before, that runs out July 1. That's why we're trying to move it along. So that would take care of the city's, a, a major part of the city's responsibility for the work. We still have other engineering responsibility. But most often, people ask, what about Willow Road, which really was the, the central part of this? It just, we, we've, those of you who've been around know that in significant, maybe three inches or more rainfall events, that floods, we have to close the street. It becomes a public safety issue because of access to the neighborhood for, for police and fire vehicles. That, where that is at is the Cook County Department of Transportation Highways has requested additional soil borings. Their concern is that our plan to place five culverts in and then raise the elevation of the road, roadway with soils, their concern is that the soils underneath that, remember, it's the slough area, is so faulty that there'll be, you know, basically a compression of that. So they've got some concerns, there's additional work. But at least, and this is a long way of getting to this item, this will cover a large part of the city's responsibilities, and it will do it within the timeframe required by Rebuild Illinois.
This is a heavily grant-funded overall project.
Yes. There's, certainly there is city money involved, but the large, the heavy lifting is done by Metro Water Recreation District and Cook County.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I, I just have one question. What percentage of the project do you think now that we would be contributing to?
Oh, I would say we're probably a partnership of a third. So, and, and it's probably going to be about a $3 million project, so roughly, roughly.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, Resolution R2517, staff memo and resolution authorizing a civil engineering services agreement with Gualt Hamilton Associates Incorporated for construction engineering services for the Elm Street Flood Control Project. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, one discussion here. This is, you want to?
Sure. It's another flood control project. This is at Elm Street, where certainly council's aware that in significant rainfall events, that floods. And, and it also is a major concern for the Park District because in, I think several years ago, three out of five years, it flooded the baseball field. So they lost the season, and then plus there's a large cost of restoration of the field. And that's kind of surprisingly more expensive than what people might think. Enough so that their insurance, they have a collective pool, Park District Risk Management Association, flag that as, as something for them to make, make, make work to, to prevent that, preventative work for that. So it is a concern, it is an expense. So the city, with the assistance of Senator Mark Walker, made application in the State of Illinois for funding for this, and we, we received a $250,000 grant, which will oversize, replace the culvert, again to, to get the water to go under the street rather than above the street. And then there was additional money left over that will help the McDonald Creek shoreline restoration. There's, there's severe erosion problems in that area. And that work, we had the pre-construction meeting this past week. It will probably start in about two weeks, and it should be completed roughly mid to late May.
Do we know what the cost of this project is going to be?
Uh, let's see, we do. And I'm sorry, I don't have that. I will get that to you. It's, it's not listed here. I'll get that for you, sorry.
This, yeah, it's 21, not to exceed 21,000.
Yeah, this, this is the engineering.
It's just the engineering portion.
Engineering contract.
Right.
Not the project itself.
No, that'd be great if it was only 21,000.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C, staff memo, resolution authorizing a civil engineering services agreement with Gualt Hamilton Associates Incorporated for construction engineering services for Owen Street Flood Control Project. You know what, let's get the dollar amount. We don't have it here.
It's in, there's city engineer's memo, I believe. And the resolution.
$83,000. Cost not to exceed, this, this, this agreement has had a cost not to exceed $83,000. So we need a motion and a second to approve?
I have a question. Is that, that would be for us to pay, right?
Correct, yes. And it's, Rebuild Illinois eligible.
Okay, I see that.
This is the engineering work related to the.
Correct.
Item A allows us to use, to, to award the bid for the project, and item C is the engineering services for that project, for the construction engineering work. Do we have a, do we need a motion and a second?
So moved. Morgan Adams.
Second, Anderson.
Any questions on it? Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anders.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, ordinance 02504, staff memo and ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 6 of the Prosperite City Code regarding products containing tetrahydrocanambenol, or THC. This is a first reading. I don't know if Chief or Joe would like to comment on that?
Sure. As of recent, we've noticed a large number of THC and kratom-infused products being sold out in the public. THC-infused products and kratom products are not regulated by any governing body that is recognized federally or statewide. And so we are taking precautionary measures as these products are known and popular for its stimulant and opiate-like effects. However, there are several negative effects, especially with long-term and high-dose use. And so we're taking a proactive approach to, to prevent the sale of these products as it's not really known what exactly they do, but they do have stimulant-like effects. They are addictive, they do pose damage to, to, to the body and to, to the health of an individual. There are mental health effects, respiratory effects, and there are overdose risks. And so for, for those reasons, we're looking to limit and ban the, the sale of those products.
Do you know if any of those products are being currently sold in Prospect Heights?
Yes, they are.
Surrounding municipalities have passed ordinances banning.
Yes, many other municipalities around us have passed ordinances banning the sale of these products.
Right, okay.
Any other questions?
No.
So this will come back at our next meeting for approval. So if anything comes up between meetings, give, please give the chief or Joe a call. I'd like to go back to item C. I did not, we did, I did not ask for that to be, I did not read that the right way. I'd like to amend that. What do we have to do to amend that? No. Oh, we could undo it then. No? Yeah? All right, okay. Item 10, staff and elected officials and commission reports. We'll start on the right. Peter?
No, sir.
Bob, Jerry?
Nothing for finance.
No, sir. Mayor, it's that time of year I need to give the warning to the public. As the weather conditions are changing, we are going to be seeing door-to-door salespersons and the potential for fraud. Over the last two construction season, pavement seasons, the city has experienced a high number of Irish, particularly paving, no, Irish. That's them. It doesn't necessarily only involve them, but that happens to be the MO of the patrons that have been committing fraud in town. We've had residents taken for excess of $10,000. We've had a number of others that we've been able to stop because of concerned citizens who saw that something was not right. Last year, we had an estimated 14 properties hit, and the year before, we had approximately 25. So as a resident, if you haven't called and scheduled for someone to come and give you a price, and you haven't made the arrangement, and they say they're in town on a short, and they use sales pitches to force you, they're getting such a good deal, but you got to have it done today or signed today. And if they ask for cash versus upfront, those are all signs of fraud. So please, if you see that activity happening, additionally, be on the lookout of the vehicles. Most of the vehicles do not have tags and signs on them. They may have a lot of out-of-state license plates, North Dakota, Virginia, Texas, other parts of the country that are coming around. Also, too, driveways and that work do require permits. Contractors have to be, be registered. So make sure that you're asking them to give you a contract and to secure a permit before you agree to any work and pay any money. We're hoping to nip this in the bud upfront. It was a year ago this week that we had, it start last year on the first nice weekend of March. So please be on the lookout. Any questions, don't hesitate to call the Building Department, call City Hall, and they'll direct you to the appropriate staff. Thank you.
And just a quick question. If, if, if someone's getting their driveway done like that, they would have gotten a permit, they'd have the green sticker in the front window, correct?
That is correct. When you get a valid permit through the city, it does say City of Prospect Heights. It's usually a bright green or another neon color that goes in the front window, and it says that they've been issued a permit from the city. If you see that on a window when someone's working, that usually means that they're legit. You can still always call and double-check with us. We have no problem confirming whether a project's got a permit or not.
So not just the person getting the work, but any neighbors?
Yeah, any neighbors.
If you have concern.
Last year, three of the people that we were able to prevent from getting, taken advantage of was because of concerned citizens realizing that things just didn't look right and reported it to the, to the Building Department. They can also call the Police Department, they're very well-trained at fraud activity as well. We work well together. So we're here to protect citizens. Thank you.
Joe?
Just want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day.
I'm Irish.
We're Irish. Well, at least I wore my green, because I am Irish, so.
Me too. I got gray here, too.
Wait, anything?
No, nothing for me.
Chief?
Yeah, just a couple things. Thank you, Mayor. In, in January until now, Illinois has pushed out more than 300 new laws. I compiled the list of a couple laws that, that can affect, and they are good to know. The O'Hare Driver Safety Act, it is now illegal and prohibited for people to stop and stand their motor vehicle on the shoulder of a highway within a one-half-mile radius of the eastern entrance of O'Hare Airport at the intersection of Interstate 90 and I-294. Illinois State Police, I'm sure, will be enforcing that. Landlord Retaliation Act, it is now illegal for landlords to punish their tenants for reporting code violations or asking for repairs. If the landlord retaliates in any way, the tenant can take legal action and ask for up to two months' rent or actual damages to be remedied. Illinois Mobile Drivers License and State IDs, you can now present your driver's license or ID via a mobile app on your phone. The biggest thing to keep in mind here, police officers on a traffic stop or at a call for service with probable cause can ask you and can request the presence of an actual, real, physical ID. So while some establishments, establishments may accept the digital copy, you still need to present it to the police when asked for it. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Elect, on my left?
No, nothing, thank you.
Yes, I have a couple. Chief, I want to thank you for your presentation in Ward 2 at Rob Roy. It was fantastic. It was well-attended, and I really appreciate that. Your whole staff was, you know, the staff that was there did a great job.
Thank you.
And then, I have some exciting news. March 31st is the last day to apply for a scholarship, for Scholarship America Dollar for Scholars. And we actually have a few last people that have applied. So we want to give out some money, so, high school students, and we guarantee a Prospect Heights student a scholarship. And so we could give out more at Prospect Heights. That's fine, too. And we're looking also to award, if we can, people apply for the trade. So we'd love to give a scholarship for a student that wants to get into the trades. Then the other really exciting news is, you know, when community works together, Papa John's, at their reopening event, their ribbon-cutting, I met with the Regional Director of Marketing for Papa John's. And of course, it was a very well-attended reopening, and the restaurant looks great. Papa John's is going to have a pizza day and give 20% of all the revenue at five of their locations that service District 214 on April 9. And your promo code is... So SAF, we'll have it in the newsletter, but that's just a wonderful way that the community, a new restaurant here in Prospect Heights, generates business for them and also generates donation money to a really good cause because we give out almost 13 or more scholarships to needs-based students and I've been on the board for years. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wendy?
I don't have anything tonight.
No, sir.
Yes, here for night.
Okay.
Wheeling, it's right across from Wheeling High School, so.
Item 11, approval of warrants, will the clerk please read the expenditures and the...
Yes, thank you. The total of the expenditures amounted to $101,781.93. We also had wire payments on February 21st, 2025, we had a payroll amount of $244,125.21 which brought the total warrant, total amount to 345,907.14 for council's approval tonight, please.
Thank you. Do we need a motion and a second to approve?
So moved, Anderson.
Second, Cameron.
A motion and a second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any public comments, anybody asking to speak on the agenda matter?
No, don't have any.
Anybody? Item 13, we have no executive session tonight, so there'll be no court brief, which is actually an executive session items. Therefore, for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
A motion and a second. All the public say aye.
Aye.
Move? Okay.